About ten seconds.
Okay.
Great.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Schroffnagle. I'm a League of Women Voters Minnetonka, Eden Prairie, Hopkins volunteer. The League of Women Voters would like to thank you all for coming tonight and our cable and internet viewing audience. I would especially like to thank our candidates for being part of the democratic process by running for office and for being willing to serve our community. Besides being a nonpartisan political educator, the League also researches important issues important to our members and to the health of our communities. If you are interested in finding out more about what to do to make a difference, please pick up a membership brochure at the registration table or visit us at L W V M E P H dot org. Membership is open to all genders age sixteen and older. You can find more information about candidates and about voting at vote for eleven dot org. Again, thank you for coming and remember to vote on November eighth. I would like to introduce our moderator, Pat Robles, a trained and qualified moderator from the Wayzetta and Plymouth League of Women Voters.
Thank you, Tom. I am Pat Robles, a member of Wayzetta Plymouth area League of Women Voters and the moderator for tonight's forum. Good evening and on behalf of the League of Women Voters Minnetonka, Eden Prairie and Hopkins, I would like to welcome you to the City of Eden Prairie City Council and mayoral candidate forum. We thank the candidates and the audience for attending tonight and for our viewing audience. The purpose of the candidate forum is to give Eden Prairie voters an opportunity to hear candidates discuss the issues of importance to them in this election. The event is free and open to the public. Written questions were submitted by the public via email at W W W dot L W V M E P H dot org. We encourage candidates to have their supporters submit questions. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose a political party or a candidate for office. The League of Women Voters Minnetonka, Eden Prairie and Hopkins has a longstanding history in our community of providing unbiased candidate and issue information that is widely used by Minnesota voters regardless of their political beliefs. There is never enough time to cover all the issues. If you feel that your question was not answered or addressed, please contact the candidate directly after the forum. Their contact information will be posted at the end of the forum for you not in attendance. And for those of you in the audience, the candidates were instructed to place their materials on the tables in the lobby. We will start the candidate forum with the opening statements. Each candidate will be given two minutes for their opening statement and two minutes for their closing statements. Opening statements will begin in alphabetical order, beginning with the mayoral candidates and continuing on with the city council candidates. Candidates will have two minutes to respond to the questions. Questions will be asked in a rotating order so that each candidate has the opportunity to respond first and last. Our timekeeper Sandy Brant will hold up a fifteen second sign and a stop sign. Let's begin with opening statements. And the first candidate will be candidate Case.
Thank you, Pat. A few notes of gratitude first. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this debate this evening. I thank you to my five colleagues up here on the dais with us, with me, for wanting to make our community better and for putting yourselves out there for public scrutiny. And thank you to all the people in the audience this evening and/or watching from home or live in the days ahead. Your participation is so critical for the future and the strength of American democracy. Kathy Nelson, Mark Freiberg and I cumulatively have forty-six years of elected council experience. That's forty-six years of serving the people of Eden Prairie. Cumulatively, that's nearly one thousand council meetings, thousands of hours away from our families to make sure that Eden Prairie continues to be an incredible place to live. We have forty-six years of being truthful and transparent in everything we do, of being committed to responsible government and of keeping the ship moving in the right direction. It's easy for newcomers to the election process to say what they might do or share what they think should happen or to offer how they could make things better. But we have forty-six cumulative years of a record of doing just that and more. A record of being a number one city by Money Magazine, a record of being a top ten Green Step city in the state, one of a handful of triple-A bond rated cities in the state, of being the top government workplace in Minnesota and of being a solar smart city and of receiving the top safe city award in the state. Eden Prairie is in a really great place. I'm very thankful to be sitting here in this incumbent seat this evening defending our enviable record of accomplishment as a council, as a city and as your representative. And thank you for having given me that opportunity.
Thank you. Candidate Shaw Walter.
I would like to thank everybody here as well. This is an amazing opportunity to be sitting here in front of you and describing who I am and why I'm here. My name is Tracy Shaw Walter and I'm running for mayor. I'm a wife and mother of two amazing children. My husband and I have been married for twenty-two years and have lived in Eden Prairie for the last five. My husband grew up here in Eden Prairies and I worked here at the city actually for nine years quite some time ago. So we felt drawn to be back in this community when his mother was having some health problems. Eden Prairie is a very unique community because it has so much to offer in amenities, the people, the community, the programs here. There is so much joy that it can bring people. I didn't realize that till I actually lived here. Working for the city gave me a certain brand of experiences which are very valuable in life, just to know how a city works. But the other side of that value is living in the same city that you actually used to work for and sometimes being a consumer of those services, most times I guess if you use water every day. But the reason I decided to run for mayor was because that I feel we are in a very tumultuous time and people are looking for a change in the way they interact with government. My time working at the city allowed me to gain a good understanding of how the city functions and I believe that will make me a very empathetic candidate. Thank you. Thank you.
Candidate Freiberg.
Good evening. My name is Mark Freiberg and it's been my honor serving each and every one of you these last three and a half years on the Eden Prairie City Council. During this time, I've worked hard to always be accessible, to listen to your concerns and requests for help and work very hard finding solutions for them. For those of you who know me, you know how dedicated that passion is. What I'm finding now though is there is still work to be done. It's unfinished. There's more people to help. That's the true reason why I'm running for reelection for the city council. I've lived in Eden Prairie for forty-one years with my wife, raising three and now adult children, all good examples of the Eden Prairie School District. Prior to serving on the city council, I served three years on the Heritage Preservation Commission. After that, I served another three years on the Eden Prairie Planning Commission. I currently sit on the Board of Directors of Eden Prairie Community Foundation and on the Board of Directors of the Southwest Transit System. In addition, I'm a member of the Southwest Cable Commission, Eden Prairie Historical Society and Eden Prairie AM Rotary Club. Thank you for being here and let me share with you the reasons that I'm seeking reelection.
Thank you. Candidate Lehman.
Good evening. Thank you for spending the time with us. My name is Greg Lehman. I'm running for the position of city council member. I've been living in this amazing city for ten years. I've raised my children here. My son Larry, he was a graduate of the Eden Prairie High School in two thousand eighteen. My daughter Zofia is currently at junior at the high school where she's a member of the volleyball team. Hopefully we'll go to state this year. I think we have a good shot at that. We love it here. Long before Eden Prairie became what it is today, an East Coast writer named Elizabeth Freeze Ellet referred to this area as the garden spot of the territory. It was beautiful and appealing then and it's beautiful and appealing now. And we, people are coming here literally from all over the world because there's such appeal here. And I appreciate the past stewardship and decision making that's taken place that's made this such a great place to live and I want to participate in continuing that.
Thank you. Candidate Nelson.
Hi, my name's Kathy Nelson and I'm a current council member for Eden Prairie and I'm just finishing up my fourth term. And I care so much about the city. I work hard, I do my homework and I listen to people who call me. I know we have a shared vision for a vital, strong community with green spaces and trees and flowers that make it nice to go out and around. We have a responsibility to keep our roads and our sewers and our water system and our parks and our snowplows in excellent condition, especially those snowplows. Winter is not coming yet, but we all remember it. Keeping financial stability for the city is important. We have a triple-A rating and that allows us to be the one of the lowest fifteen percent in taxes in the metropolitan community and we have ninety-five percent people who approve of the service level for Eden Prairie at the same time. And we're very proud of being both low taxes and high service. It takes work, but the effort's been made. I believe in encouraging innovation and planning for the future in Eden Prairie and solve problems before they become large ones. That's how we have a nice city. And I promise to listen, to use common sense and integrity when representing you. A little bit of background, I've lived in the city for thirty years. My children went, our adult children now, went to Eden Prairie schools. I have a BA in communications from the university. As a council member, I serve on the Eden Prairie Firefighter Relief Association Board and I've learned just how wonderful our firefighters really and truly are. I also serve representing the city and the Southwest Quarter Management Commission.
Thank you so much. Thank you candidates for your opening statements. Now we're going
One more.
Oh, sorry. I'm so sorry.
It's hard to see.
Now, let's hear from candidate Olson.
Well, thank you. I want to thank the League of Women Voters tonight for hosting this forum and more than that, their commitment to the democratic process and forums like this are an important piece to be able to further that. My name is Micah Olson. I'm running for Eden Prairie City Council. And while, you know, I'm new to Eden Prairie, I was born, raised and have lived most of my life in western Hennepin County. And, you know, as so many folks here tonight have already said, Eden Prairie is a wonderful place to live. It's a wonderful place to raise a family, to work and to dream, as the city slogan talks about. And there's a reason that my story of being young and new to Eden Prairie has been resonating with a number of folks in Eden Prairie because that population of young and new residents is growing. It's fastly growing and I live in those communities where there's so many young people who have chosen to live here in Eden Prairie for a reason. You know, my goal is to give that population a voice on the city council and be able to look for innovative ways to engage people. You know, the great, you know, you might say challenge, but I look at it more of as an opportunity here in Eden Prairie is that of engaging and trust. And the conversations that I have with folks and residents is about that idea, about how the city can be more engaging with folks across the board throughout the city and how we can better our communities. And again, I don't see this as a challenge. I see this more as an opportunity to be innovative and how we engage citizens in meaningful ways. And my hope is that this race is about engaging residents, right, and looking for those ways. And I'm looking at, working on a platform of safe neighborhoods, economic opportunity and building trust with people. And I look forward to the rest of the discussion tonight.
Thank you. Thanks candidates for your opening statements. And since we almost forgot candidate Olson, we're going to start with you for the first question. Candidate Olson, how long have you, this question will be the same question for each of the candidates. How long have you lived in Eden Prairie?
Yeah, so for me, I've lived in Eden Prairie less than a year and I'm really excited to be here. You know, I chose to be here for a reason. It's a great place to live and dream and to work. And I guess a little bit more background, it's a very simple question, I guess. But we've got, you know, I chose this area for a reason. Like I wanted to be in the community. I care about Hennepin County because I've lived here most of my life and wanted to engage in this area. And, you know, the cool part about being able to work even remotely is you do have the opportunity to choose where you live. And there's so many people in this city that are choosing to do that and live here for a reason.
Thank you. Candidate Case.
So I've lived in Eden Prairie most of forty-three years. My wife and I married and lived in Eden Prairie since nineteen ninety-eight. We live in an eighteen seventy-four farmhouse on Pioneer Trail. She's Kathy sitting there, the president of the Historical Society. We've raised four children who all went through the schools and graduated from Eden Prairie High School who are now all adults and we have five grandchildren, none of which live in Eden Prairie, but we'd like them to. So we have a lot of history here. We're deeply embedded into the culture of both old Eden Prairie, like really old Eden Prairie and not quite so old Eden Prairie and of course, the present day as well.
Thank you. Candidate Shaw Walter.
As I stated before, I've lived here for five years. I remember the exact day we moved in. It was my daughter's birthday. So it was really a fun day. We got to, we didn't actually move, move in, but we spent our first night in Eden Prairie on her birthday. On the carpet floor with no furniture, it was amazing. And it was a, it was a day like my kids would never forget. It was really hard at that time to find a house. So we were so excited at that time when we finally found the right place. A neighborhood is the heart of who you are, in my opinion. The people that are your neighbors, they help you raise your kids. They help you, you know, mow your lawn if you're gone for a week, watch your dogs. So it was so important to us to find the right community for that. And when we found our forever home, I mean, at least until we can't take care of it anymore, it was a true blessing. So I have to tell you too, the things that we've done in the short amount of time here, ride bikes, use the lakes, use all the parks and it's truly one of the best places to raise family.
Thank you. Candidate Freiberg.
Well, I've lived on Eden Prairie as a homeowner for forty-one years. I came out in nineteen eighty-one and it was a little bit different community back then. I think the population is about fifteen thousand. Many times we'd be watching the horses walk up and down Pioneer Trail. In fact, when we moved in, it was kind of a shock. I was moving from St. Louis Park, is that there was a horse walking down our street as we're unloading our boxes. And my daughter, who's forty-two now, was one years old at that time, telling me about the horsey, the horsey. And I was going, what are you talking about? I'm looking around, here's a horse. And both the owner running after him. And, you know, it's been a wonderful place. I've been blessed with many, many friends over so many years out here. And I totally enjoy, you think about the parks, you think about the lakes. It's a beautiful place. I've been very blessed.
Thank you. Candidate Lehman.
Good evening. My family and I lived
Mike.
My family and I lived in Eden Prairie for ten years. And even in just the span of a decade, we've seen just astounding changes taking place in the demographics and then just like the infrastructure and the buildings where there was once one small building, all of a sudden now there's, you know, medium sized apartment building. But my kids and I, my family have loved and thoroughly enjoyed living here. And I know that we face some unique challenges as our community begins to change and become a bit more, as it changes demographically. And I think this is a good opportunity to pursue fresh approaches to some of our problems facing our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Nelson.
I've lived in Eden Prairie for thirty years. We originally moved here when my children were in early grade school. And we didn't like where the schools where we live and we went school shopping, not unlike a lot of people in Eden Prairie. And we found the perfect house in Eden Prairie and the perfect schools and we moved in. We've enjoyed the parks and trails and all the friends we've made here. We also chose Eden Prairie because it had good connections to downtown Minneapolis where my husband worked. And we've never considered leaving or moving anywhere else simply because we enjoyed it so much here. And that's one of the reasons why I find it so important to keep the kind of city that the city has been so everybody else can keep enjoying it and making friends and sending their kids to school, all the things we all enjoy.
Thank you. The next question is, and we'll start with you, candidate Nelson. What type of civic or nonprofit involvement have you had within Eden Prairie?
Well, I've been working for Eden Prairie. I started off on the Planning Commission and was vice chair of that for quite a number of years. And finally, in two thousand, I was also worked on school referendums. I had kids in school at that time, referendums were important, and the Prairie Center Area Task Force along with the chamber. Then in two thousand six, friends encouraged me to start thinking of running for the council, including the current mayor at that time, Nancy Tyra Lucans. And we thought about it for a long time. In fact, I was one of the last people to sign up. But one of my daughters said, if you're not going to do it now, when are you going to do it? And I decided she was right and I ran. And I was lucky to win. And I've worked on Eden Prairie Chamber Government Committee for a long time, Eden Prairie Foundation. I still work on St. Andrews Lutheran Church Food Committee and I'm a prop shop volunteer. And I'm also on the Grant Commission Committee for the foundation. You can only work. Also, I mentioned the fire relief board and Southwest Light Rail. So I'm very involved in the city.
Thank you. Candidate Olson.
Yeah, I'm new and I'm getting more involved in the community and looking for ways to do that. I think one of the first things that I started engaging with was the chamber. We've got an incredible chamber here in Eden Prairie and talking to Pat and looking for ways to plug in and get motivated there. I want to talk a little bit about, you know, the work that I do. You know, I work for a nonprofit, might not be based in Eden Prairie, but it focuses on policy, relates to the city of Minnesota. Wow. I didn't know my words had that much impact. Wow. So in terms of the work that I do is, I build relationships. At the bottom line, that's what I focus on is building relationships with people all across the state. And I have chapters of the organization that I work for in about four different population centers. And that's about driving policy changes at the state of Minnesota level. And so it's been a learning experience to be able to, how do you bring different interests together on different topics, from different perspectives, different backgrounds? And I've been able to very successfully do that. You know, relationships are important. And, you know, looking to build trust in a city is vitally important. And I want to commend all of the current, the mayor and the city council members here tonight for their work and commitment to building relationships.
Thank you. Candidate Case.
Thanks, Micah, for that. I've been involved with the Eden Prairie Community Foundation for several years. I became vice chair toward the end. Been Alliance Club member, which I thoroughly enjoy, that group. For the last three years, I worked on open space referendums back in the nineties. I've served on, this is all pre-council, so it's all volunteer work, served on the Eden Prairie Historical and Culture Commission at the time, that was the name of it. It was a city commission. And then it was renamed the Arts and Culture and then renamed the Heritage Preservation Commission, but that was all the same for about four years. Served, again, these are non-compensated activities. Southwest Transit Commission, I was treasurer, suburban rate authority, Southwest Cable Commission, Tree Preservation Commission. I'm not sure I've got more, I'm sure in my mind, but if you give me a chance. But I've been involved really for the, in most of the forty years that I've lived here on something.
Thank you. Candidate Shaw Walter.
I, excuse me, I served on my kids hockey teams, which I don't know if any of you have kids in hockey, but that is a very big job. And I loved it. And I was able to use so many of my skills there, including my people's skills. But as I said before, I did work for the city for nine years. Compensated, yes, but it also provided me with a lot of experience and knowledge. I was a customer service representative. I started out at the front desk here at Eden Prairie and quickly, learned quick and was able to learn some of the other counters and fill in for the other administrative assistants and planning and public works, the water plant and the police department. I spent five years as a customer service representative. And I did a little bit of organizing and managing our schedules. We had several people at that time. And I also worked four years as the chief's admin assistant in the police department.
Thank you. Candidate Freiberg.
Prior to serving on the city council, I served three years on the Heritage Preservation Commission and then three years on the Planning Commission in Eden Prairie. I currently sit on the Board of Directors of the Eden Prairie Community Foundation and the Board of Directors of Southwest Transit System. In addition, I've been involved over the years with Southwest Cable Commission, with the Eden Prairie Historical Society and been a longtime member of the Eden Prairie AM Rotary Club.
Thank you. Candidate Lehman, what type of civic or nonprofit involvement have you had within Eden Prairie?
I've been on the, I've been an elected member of the school board that was compensated, but I still consider that as a volunteer position given the amount of time that we put in. And like candidate Shaw Walter said about being at the children's activities, it takes a lot of time and it's not joy, but it's also, it's kind of funny how children take over your life when you have them. And it's been, I've had the opportunity to be an assistant coach at my sons, a few of my sons' basketball and soccer teams. I've been a volunteer at Feed My Sharping Children, which is almost in Eden Prairie, technically it's in Chanausen. And I've also volunteered at one of the area nursing homes. And I've also volunteered at one of the area nursing homes. And, you know, at work and wherever I go, I'm I'm a people person. My knees may be shaking here, but, but I, I really, I'm a, I'm a bridge builder. I'm, I'm a, I mean, I you know, wherever I meet people, I enjoy engaging with them. And I thoroughly enjoy serving wherever there's an opportunity, including my candidacy here.
Thank you. We'll start with candidate Lehman. And the third question is, what is something you have personally done in the past year to improve our city?
Besides keep my kids from, keeping my kids out of trouble maybe? I don't know, as a joke. I think participating in the civic process, you know, democratic process or running. And just volunteering wherever there was an opportunity. Not treating the people who are around me. Many of whom are from all over the world. Not treating them at a distance, but rather befriending many of them. And just, like I said, being a, just to the extent possible, you know, a positive influence wherever I can.
Thank you. Candidate Nelson? I've been asked to repeat the question. So what is something you have personally done in the past year to improve our city?
Well, obviously, a council member does a lot of work to do with the city and the committees. However, one thing springs to mind that's a little different. I had met with the early childhood and family people. Well, actually, I met with them right before COVID. But one of the things they said, they wished they had all the some of the park stuff was, all the new stuff was on the west side of town. And most of them lived on the east side of town or a little more affordable housing. And they said their kids especially would love a splash pad. And, but it was, they had to have a car to go to it. They would love to have something more accessible to them. And I asked where and they said, well, Nesbit Park would be perfect. And the other thing they said was they needed full sized, large porta potties. So that when they had their kids who were toilet training, they could actually get in there with them. Especially if they had another one with a stroller and stuff. They needed something bigger. Well, we got, we're able to get the larger sized porta potties right away. And finally, this year, we are starting on the splash pad at Nesbit Park. So it took some time, I will admit.
Thank you. Candidate Olson, what is something you have personally done in the past year to improve our city?
Yeah, the, the thing that I, I think that's gone both ways in terms of trying to help other people and then also been a benefit to me is building relationships. That's been the really incredible part of being able to, to run and not only run, but just to move here and engage with the people in my building and build relationships with people. And I do think that matters. I do think that matters. You know, building relationships is a key to a successful organization, business, family, and even a city. And so I think the other thing too is with a campaign that's focused on trying to do politics differently. You know, a focus on, you know, building relationships with people, engaging people in meaningful ways. And focus on service, you know, looking for ways to, to engage people. And that's what this, my campaign has been all about. And I think everybody up on this stage has a commitment to all of that as well. And so I'm really excited of moving forward with that.
Thank you. Candidate Case, what is something you have done, you have personally done in the past year to improve our city?
When I ran four years ago, I ran on a platform of four initiatives that were near and dear to my heart. Climate action, affordable housing, systemic racism, structural inequities, and entrepreneurship. And I'm really proud to say that over the last year to two, all four of these programs, we've stood up across the city. We now have a climate action plan that is one of the finest in the state of Minnesota, including the first city to have 2050 as a goal of being carbon neutral. 2030 as a goal of having every one of our fleet of vehicles in the city of Eden Prairie being electric. And then the first city in the state of Minnesota to begin to transition to electric police cars. And as you know, with the Mustang coming online this summer, we've got two. Affordable housing, we did a study and we voted as a council on the initiative. And part of that is our inclusionary housing ordinance, which is, we're not one of the tops in the state, but we are one of probably 10 in the area. And it's going to be great to promote every single apartment project coming online. Will have a certain percentage of affordable housing units. We, as you know, tasked the Human Rights and Diversity Commission with a systemic racism, structural inequity study. They spent eight months or so on that, came back. We just recently had a recent town hall with our diverse communities, which was amazing. And the entrepreneurship chamber, school district partnership will probably be stood up sometime in fall 2023 at the high school.
Thank you. Candidate Showalter, what is something you have personally done in the past year to improve our city?
I'm going to echo a lot of what, pardon me, candidate Olson has said in building relationships. I enjoy and cherish building relationships. I work full time in a grocery store and the people that I've met there that I engage with every single day of all ages, all ethnic, excuse me, ethnicities. Pretty much, almost every continent is, except for Antarctica, is represented in our workforce there and our clientele. And I've made it a point to be engaging in, in not just with my coworkers, but the people there. And that has taught me so much about just people in general. And so the friendships and the relationships that I've built here, I believe have really not only just enriched me, but enriched my micro community, my microcosm of my life. And, you know, I always hope that that ripples out to the people that I meet. I also serve on my, the board of my HOA. And organized several things through that, including the night to unite in our neighborhood. Which I got to meet the lovely Kathy Nelson that night.
Thank you. Candidate Freiberg, what is something you have personally done in the past year to improve our city?
This past year has been quite exciting for me. I've taken a much more active role with the Eden Prairie Community Foundation as one of their board members. And been very active with it. In addition, same thing holds true with Southwest Transit System. It's been a very trying year on that and I've stepped up and increased my involvement also with that organization. We take a lot of pride also as far as the city council and what we've done collectively on affordable housing this past year. We've been very involved in that. And I've gotten involved in numerous tenant landlord issues in Eden Prairie when called upon. I never back off when someone seeks my help. I'll always will be there. And that's happened a few times so far this year. You know, some, some, we'll just see how it ends up as far, but I'll always would be there.
Thank you. Our next question, we're going to start with candidate Freiberg. If elected, what would be your main priority to bring to the council?
Main priorities that I would bring to the council are going to be the same ones that I brought forth in 2018. When I was first elected with an extra twist. In Eden Prairie, there's actually, there's actually two Eden Prairies and it still to this day bothers me a lot. What I'm talking about is food challenges. I hear too often as far as kids going hungry. It bothers me an awful lot. We work very hard in as a community, but it's one of those things that has a long lifeline to it. I hear that things like as soon as Prop gets, you know, food, it's already out the backside already. There's that much need. I'm also going to keep as far as working with my colleagues on the affordable housing initiatives, as far as we're going to keep thinking beyond the box, how to continue to better our options in solving the problem. Again, it's long term, but we can never back off on it.
Thank you. Candidate Lehman, if elected, what would be your main priority to bring to the council?
I think one of the most pressing concerns is like what was said earlier, affordable housing. I think it's important for our community to have housing that the people that serve us, like firefighters and policemen can afford. And to bring, to take a real good, hard look at upcoming infrastructure projects that will help alleviate the challenge of affordable housing.
Thank you. Candidate Nelson, if elected, what would be your main priority to bring to the council?
My priorities have always been in the areas of energy and innovation and problem solving for the community. And expanding our use of green energy, helping businesses work into green energy. Find ways to help them where they can afford it, how people can afford energy efficient appliances in their homes with sometimes rebates, make sure that's out there. Innovation has come in with the housing that we've been working with. And that is important to keep going so there are room for families in Eden Prairie. And problem solving comes in, in keeping the city in the nice place it is. You know, like I say, changing some of what's at various parks to suit all the community. But looking for what problems are out there, helping to find a solution for it. And then work with the general community once we found that solution. And that's, that's where my priorities have been and will continue to be.
Thank you. Candidate Olson, if elected, what would be your main priority to bring to the council?
Yeah, thank you for that question. You know, my main priority would be trying to attract businesses to the city. You know, at the heart of, you know, any city is a thriving business community and Eden Prairie is fortunate to have businesses of all sizes that call our city home. And we need to ensure that we cultivate an environment for our businesses to flourish and grow. And that regulations are fair and simple and taxes are low and unobtrusive. You know, when it comes to attracting business, right, you know, I think there are two important points. And the first is, you know, just trying to avoid carving out special interests for a business and incentives for a way of just a particular business, right? So avoiding that. And the second thing is I would submit that there are a number of indirect factors that go into people wanting to start a business in, in a city. And including good schools, the cost of living, clean water, easy transportation, access to capital, et cetera. And making Eden Prairie a great place to live and raise a family, you know, goes hand in hand with a good business community. And we've got a lot of great things going on here and we want to continue that trend. So we have an opportunity to make Eden Prairie a beacon of bold ideas, entrepreneurship and innovation. And when folks want to start a business, I want their first thought to be Eden Prairie.
Thank you. Candidate Case, if elected, what would be, would be your main priority to bring to the council?
I think we've all expanded this into priorities, so I'm going to join in on that. We have incredible public safety, some of the best fire and police, we have the best fire and police department in the state, well respected. We need to continue to fund them. Our economic climate is very powerful. We have the lowest taxes, about in the lower 15% of the entire seven county metro area. Super strong tax base with 60% residential, 40% commercial. We have a tax rate that has declined every year in the last 20, but one, that's unprecedented. We have the best park and trail system of any city our size in the seven county metro area. And then my last one, which is also the most important, is to continue to listen to our residents for what they want. Because everybody wants a lot and not everybody wants to spend a lot. But we have a 92% resident approval rating on our last resident survey that says we are raising the right amount of taxes for what they get for their money. And I want to continue that pattern and to continue to listen to people to make sure that we're doing the job that they sent us here to do.
Thank you. Candidate Showalter, if elected, what would be your main priority to bring to the council?
There's a few pillars I stand on, on that. Transparency is one. I really believe that fiscal and information transparency is key. That's how you gain public trust. It's how you build relationships. It's how you get people involved and for them to get, be engaged and want to be involved. And so they don't feel that they're separated from the city. The services are, you know, there for them, for us. I also believe that in doing those things, that there will, it will bring a balance between city services, city employees and residents. And having everybody feel valued at the same time.
Thank you. For the next question, we're going to start with candidate Showalter. Name the political entities you've accepted donated funds from.
Zero.
Candidate Freiberg, name the political entities you've accepted donated funds from.
Yes, I can't hear.
Name the political entities you've accepted donated funds from.
This election, none.
Sorry. Candidate Lehman, name the political entities that you've accepted donated funds from.
None.
Candidate Nelson, name the political entities you've accepted donated funds from.
I haven't accepted any, nor have I ever accepted any in the whole four terms I've been on. The city council, I do not take individual contributions over $100 as well.
Thank you. Candidate Olson, name the political entities that you've accepted donated funds from.
None.
Candidate Case?
Not to break, I've got, go ahead and read it. That's fine.
Name the political entities you've accepted donated funds from.
None.
All right. Thank you. That was a quick question. Let's go to question six and we're starting with candidate Case. Explain the direction you hope to see our city is headed in the near future.
The direction that the city is headed?
In the near future.
In the near future.
Correct.
I think we're on an amazing positive trajectory. And if you look at all the metrics, any way that you would gauge a city from, you know, strong tax base, strong business community, strong partnership relationships between the city and school district and the chamber of commerce. Again, I'll say, I've said this many times, we are in a really good place, an enviable place. Eden Prairie is, is often the one that gets emulated by other cities in so many of our initiatives and programs. So in the near future, I am incredibly optimistic about how Eden Prairie will proceed in the year and the years to come. Mostly because of where we have been in the last three, four, five, 10 years. The stability that we have and again, the strong, strong tax base and the strong resident support. I didn't say also that we have a 95 or 96% approval rating by our business community. So we are in a great place. I want to see that continue. I think most residents do as well.
Thank you. Candidate Showalter, explain the direction you hope to see our city headed in the near future.
Well, I hope to see the city grow and flourish and while doing that, you know, conserving the environment that we have left. We have some very what's the word? I guess protected or it should be protected lands that have a high amount of biodiversity. There's like 1%, I believe, of prairie left in Minnesota, like actual real prairie. And Eden Prairie has a lot of that 1%. I, I really, I stood up on Hennepin Village, there's a pathway there. And I walk there very often. very often. And the beauty of the prairie is something that I don't want to see go away. So I do know that we need to find housing solutions for some people. I don't believe that building a ton of apartment buildings is always the way to go with that. I would like to really find new and creative ways to structure that development, and I would also like to find ways that homeowners or people could get into homes and not just apartments through affordable housing.
Thank you. Candidate Freiberg, explain the direction you hope to see our city headed in the near future.
Well, I also think that Eden Prairie is an amazing place. And we have approximately 2,800 businesses in Eden Prairie. It's an amazing amount, if you think about it. We have very, very low unemployment. I was talking to the chamber the other day, and figure for July, they're claiming is 1.7%. Now, that's their figure, and that's an amazing number. You look at that combination as far as, and as you are seeing, I believe the city is coming together more and more with celebrations like People Fest and stuff. I went to People Fest this year, and I'll tell you, it really felt good. I mean, I'm starting to see more and more people, you know, interact with one another, maybe finding more similarities and differences. And, you know, it does your heart good when you see it, and it's all part of where we're going in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Lehman, explain the direction you hope to see our city headed in the near future.
I think it's great. I think it's been well managed in the past, but I would like to see some progress made with regard to affordable housing. And I would like to make sure that we are not allowing our tax rate to become excessive or, you know, unaffordable for, for working families.
Thank you. Candidate Nelson, explain the direction you hope to see our city headed in the near future.
I hope to see the city heading forward in the direction that we're going in right now. We have a low taxes, but high services. We have a prosperous business community. I want to continue to see a safe community with our great police and fire departments. Also, we've been adding things like pollinator friendly plants, because everybody's starting to know that that's important, it's a little thing. And also a diverse tree population, as we had 40% ash trees, because they were supposed to, years and years ago, not to get diseases. We found out that wasn't so. But so we're adding for that, for the future. We want room for every generation in the community and for housing for all of those people. Schools, we don't have anything to do with it, but it still does work for our community, and the council does support the solid schools that we have. So what we've been doing is the way I want to see us heading on and keeping the great community we have.
Thank you. Candidate Olson, explain the direction you hope to see our city headed in the near future.
Well, what we just heard, and is the reality, is that the state of the city is good. There's so many, so much good going on in Eden Prairie when it comes to parks and trail and water. You know, when we look at our police and fire departments, one thing that we, we need to acknowledge is that they are incredible, and they ought to be commended. And I think I would challenge everybody to, when you see them in our community, to thank them for their service. And I think that's important. You know, one thing, you know, we like to focus on the good, and there is so much good to celebrate, but the one thing that I think that could potentially be a challenge that we need to address is, the reality is, is that Southwest Light Rail Transit, it, it, one way or the other, it's going to be installed and activated. One way or the other, it's going to happen. And, you know, I do hear a lot of concerns from residents about the potential public safety concerns that that, that's going to bring. And, you know, when you look at the data, and I know that this is more downtown, right, in the metro area, the, the reality is, is that the crime is high and ridership is down. And I'm not saying that it's necessarily going to happen here, but there, it could happen. There could be more, an uptick of potential crime. And so I think we got to look at this in terms of, how can we look for ways to kind of insert additional costs to the community, and what is the police department going to have to do to handle some of that? So I think we need to look at that in terms of transportation.
Thank you. Candidate Olson, would you support a plastic band bag in Eden Prairie? Why or why not?
Well, you know, we're looking at the idea of an environment, right, and, and how that impacts the environment. You know, I don't, I think the bottom line for that would be, would be no. I doubt, how I'd lean is to not do that. But, you know, one thing I do hear a lot about is that residents are really love the quality of our environment here in Eden Prairie. And so when it comes to environmental sustainability goals, you know, I look at, again, going back to this idea of relationships, it is about building relationships. And I think the cool thing that we've seen in kind of the last 10, 15 years, is businesses looking at, you know, how can we contribute to kind of environment sustainability goals? And that is where the market is headed in so many good ways. And so, you know, my goal would be to encourage businesses in our city to look for ways that the city can be more supportive in terms of the environment. And I believe that is achieved by fundamentally listening and engaging.
Thank you. Candidate Case, would you support a plastic band, plastic bag ban in Eden Prairie? Why or why not?
You're going to have to say that six times.
I know.
You know, we looked at this seven or eight years ago, and at the time, it, it felt like the, the pushback was too great for the gain that we would achieve, and there were other lower hanging fruit that we could accomplish at the time. I think we're seven or eight years down the road. I think society, the world is getting to the point that we just hear daily about the plastics that are gathering in the ocean, and now the plastics that are in our water system, and we're drinking them without even knowing it, and potential of cancer causing. So I think we're there. So I'm going to say, yes, I would. And so I would send this back to our Sustainability Commission to potentially bring it for the council again.
Thank you. Candidate Showalter, would you support a plastic bag ban in Eden Prairie? Why or why not?
I kind of have a twofold answer to that. I, yes, and no. Yes, because I think we have, I, I work in a grocery store, I told you that. We go through a lot of plastic bags. But what I don't understand is why manufacturers aren't making the biodegradable plastic bags. We have cups, we have straws, we have other plastic bags, you know, made of biodegradable material. So I would say that a good solution to that would be maybe not ban plastic bags, but find a biodegradable solution that is economically affordable for grocery stores or whoever uses them.
Thank you. Candidate Freiberg, would you support a plastic bag ban in Eden Prairie? Why or why not?
Well, I kind of agree a little bit with both candidate Case saying and candidate Showalter. I would, I would lean towards saying yes, but I'm going to put a qualifier on that. I'd like to have more research to know just how much of an impact it would be on our businesses. My idea would not be to cause them hardship. But there may be a better way. There may be a better bag. I work in a hardware store, so I can relate to what you're saying there with the plastic bags in the grocery store. Those are all, I believe, for, a minimum of 40% recyclable. Maybe there's a way that they could be 80% recyclable, but definitely it could be something better for the environment. But I think we just have to learn a little bit more, but I'd certainly be willing to listen.
Thank you. Candidate Lehman, would you support a plastic bag ban in Eden Prairie? Why or why not?
I would say no. I don't think we're ready for it yet. I would be concerned about the economic impact on businesses, especially small businesses. But I think there are things that the council could do to encourage a change in consumer and business behavior towards becoming more environmentally sustainable and towards greater environmental stewardship.
Thank you. Candidate Nelson, would you support a plastic bag ban in Eden Prairie? Why or why not?
I would like to send it back to the Sustainability Commission, certainly. I, there are green plastic bags that are fully recyclable, however. I know I use them in my own home, and that's what I put my stuff in for my organic recycling, in fact. And it's recommended for that. I would like to see a rule if businesses were going to use plastic bags, that they do use green plastic bags that are recyclable. But I would like our Sustainability Commission to look at all the possibilities and come up with something that people in the business community can live with.
Thank you. For the next question, we're going to start with candidate Nelson. What endorsements or offices have you sought or received from political advocacy or special interest groups?
The only thing I've done is I did send the Realtors questionnaire back to them. I haven't asked them for anything, but I don't know if they will bring me back or not. But that is the only endorsement, and once again, I don't take back money, so it would be just an endorsement.
Thank you. Candidate Olson, what endorsements or offices have you sought or received from political advocacy or special interest groups?
Yeah, in terms of political, you know, interests or, or all that, I, I've received none.
Candidate Case, what endorsements or offices have you sought or received from political advocacy or special interest groups?
Haven't received any formally yet. I've actually taken surveys with AFSMI, MARS, which is Minneapolis Association of Realtors, and the Eden Prairie Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. Candidate Showalter, what endorsements or offices have you sought or received from political advocacy or special interest groups?
None.
Candidate Freiberg, what endorsements or offices have you sought or received from political advocacy or special interest groups?
The only thing that I've done is also send back a questionnaire to the Greater Minneapolis Board of Realtors, and I have not heard back at all.
Thank you. Candidate Lehman, what endorsements or offices have you sought or received from political advocacy or special interest groups?
None, but I have completed the survey for the Realtors group.
Thank you. Next question, we're going to start with candidate Lehman. What do you believe the goals of the city council should be?
I think there, there are so many challenges facing our community that need, I think, maybe a fresh approach, and maybe not shying away from considering new ideas of how to address some of the challenges that we face. I'd like to make some progress of making our, you know, like I said before about the, making our area a little bit more housing affordable. And I greatly appreciate the, the past stewardship that's been done, and, and look forward to a continuation of great decision making and, and making this place the, the awesome place that it has been.
Thank you. Candidate Nelson, what do you believe the goals of the city council should be?
I believe it's important to keep our basic goal of having low taxes and high services, that we have a safe community. We keep up things like our streets and our trails and our parks and our sewer and water, that we are an innovative community that works on energy issues. We work very hard on housing issues and to keep the goal of having affordable housing in every new project that comes out that's not single family housing. I believe that energy and in the environment are also very important, and I would like to see more community events, especially that brings all members of the community together, as that's important to know your neighbors and know just how great a people live in this community. And I must say, all of this has been the direction that the city council has been working in. I do want it to continue. I think it's, it's very important to keep Eden Prairie a great community for all of its residents.
Thank you. Candidate Olson, what do you believe the goals of the city council should be?
Yeah, that's a great question. You know, I think in terms of, it's, it's about engaging residents with an emphasis on accountability and accessibility, and looking for innovative ways to engage residents. You know, and again, I think it's keeping the high quality of the public services and programs that we have here in Eden Prairie, so continuing that. Now, I just want to focus on, on one thing that I think, I do think we need to consider. It's, it's an issue, you know, it's taxes, right? And so when it comes to taxes, you know, we need to understand the current context, right? And we know that property taxes here in Eden Prairie are competitive compared to other cities in Hennepin County. You know, another factor to take into consideration is the fact that there's a population of people who own a house while also being on fixed income, and the rising, you know, property taxes in all different fashions, right? Plus, the cost of living is squeezing their budgets. And so the bottom line for me is looking to, as much as possible, slow the increase of property taxes while maintaining needed city services and those quality of services. You know, we simply must look for ways to ease the burden of government, considering the increased living costs of so many in our community.
Thank you. Candidate Case, what do you believe the goals of the city council should be?
First, it would be great sometime to have a, a debate where we actually can interact, because I, you've, you have raised some good ideas, and I, I'm sitting here thinking, I've got three, four things I'd love to say back. Let me just say the goals really quickly. Public safety is job number one with the city of Eden Prairie. We have to continue to do that at, at the stellar level that we are. We need to represent the needs and the wants of all of our residents. We need to also, though, lead and educate our residents, because we were elected because of our ideas and our perspectives and our experience. We need, we need to maintain Eden Prairie's high quality of life, even as we maintain our financial stability. And I do believe, Micah, there's a way to do both of that, I know you do too. And then I think, at the end of the day, we need to leave the earth better than we found it.
Thank you. Candidate Showalter, what do you believe the goals of the city council should be?
I'm going to echo the public safety for sure. My background, working with public safety, yeah, my heart goes out to all of them. It's been a very tough couple of years for our police department, so, you know, making them feel supported is number one. I also believe in preservation and conservation of our natural heritage habitats. There's very little of it left, and finding creative ways to, you know, find ways, creative new ways for development and projects that I know we need. And fiscal responsibility is important and transparency in that. It's, it's a process, a very difficult process to get public information sometimes. And it shouldn't be, but it's just the way it is. That's the way our government is built. So I believe, as, as candidate Case said, you know, educating people on how to do those things is very important. And educating them on all the processes of resolutions and ordinances so that they can get more involved.
Thank you. Candidate Freiberg, what do you believe the goals of the city council should be?
Well, I believe our number one goal and our responsibility is the safety of our residents. So it goes without saying, keeping our police department, our fire department fully funded all times. When it comes to services, city services that we all value as far as in Eden Prairie, keep a good balance of that with our tax dollar. We do have fiduciary responsibilities that we have to be very sharp with on it. We need to find new sources and think beyond the box when it comes to affordable housing, because that's going to be an ongoing problem, and we always got to sit there and look for new sources to combat it. Same thing goes is said as far as for food challenges. I think there's more that could be done, and I think it's going to be more and more of a challenge going forward, especially with young people and seniors. I think we also have to be strong stewards of the land that we manage. We, the city council manages the land with zoning and waivers. The City Council manages the land with zoning and waivers. And I think we have to be good stewards, making very solid decisions going forward in what we do. And lastly, I think it's important to keep our business environment very solid. I like what I hear about the unemployment, you know, rate being so low, and I'm looking forward to see great things going forward on that.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with candidate Freiberg. What would you propose the City Council do to prevent another incident like the recent incident at the Shields store and gun violence in general?
One thing we have to always be conscientious of is that a city is very limited, many ways of what it can do. You know, it's a very emotional topic, but it's also governed by federal law. And I think we can never forget that. It's also governed by Second Amendment, which protects, you know, us all with the Constitution itself. As it relates to Shields, for instance, incident that you're talking about, I would be open to exploring, and I'm going to say the term voluntary measures, that they may move forward in a discussion with us. Sometimes you hear things about using items like trigger locks. Okay, it may be a source of something they could do that would not impede anyone's rights, that may not impede their sales, but might be a good middle ground to maybe prevent what happened. It may not, but it might be a move forward. I'd be very open as far as those discussions are understood as voluntary on their end because those are governed by federal law.
Thank you. Candidate Lehman. What would you propose the City Council do to prevent another incident like the recent incident at the Shields store and the gun violence in general?
I'd like to encourage businesses to look into what they could do in terms of safety measures within their facilities. I think maybe a piece of this that we're maybe not addressing is the issue of mental illness and what we could encourage to be done through the course of maybe finding and addressing. Perhaps we need to work with some of our other state and nonprofit entities, but find, I think there's a great need for, you know, ways of addressing unmet mental illness concerns. And maybe, maybe having done that, maybe that could have prevented something like this from happening.
Thank you. Candidate Nelson. What would you propose the City Council do to prevent another incident like the recent incident at the Shields store and gun violence in general?
Well, certainly what happened at the Shields store was very sad and very upsetting to a lot of people, myself included. Specifically for Shields, I do believe their guns need to be tethered so that they can show them to someone, but they can't be taken away from the case. Trigger locks should certainly be on guns and certainly not any ammunition that you can get near their guns. They're going to have to protect their guns so that, you know, people can't take them and they can't be used against anybody in the store, though in this case, it was certainly only the young man who took his own life. In the city, one thing we can do is make sure that families that have guns have them in gun safes, ammunition stored separately so that minors can't get a hold of guns. And there are state laws to that, and they certainly should be expected to be followed in Eden Prairie, as all too many gun problems are by younger than fully adult members taking things from their homes. But there are laws and they should be enforced. The state would have to consider moving to age of 21, but the city in the past has sent them a letter encouraging them to consider it. And I think that, too, is important that they do consider it.
Thank you. Candidate Olson. What would you propose the City Council do to prevent another incident like the recent incident at the Shields store and gun violence in general?
Well, I first want to say, you know, my condolences are with the victim and the family, and I think that's very important to say. The other really important piece is to commend our emergency personnel and their response to the situation. That should be very much commended by our community. You know, a proposal, you know, we could consider today, right, is working with our firearm retailers in our city on increasing safety of their businesses and customers. And it is, you know, looking at ensuring their, you know, trigger locks are on the weapons and removing the firing pin potentially on all guns before and while they're being handled. But the one thing I want to say is let's be clear about what we're talking about here, right? We have a mental health problem in our society, and particularly with children and young adults. And there's an enormous amount of data that points to that. And we need to look for ways to support our schools, our parents in the community, to give them resources. They need to address their mental health concerns. But also generally for anyone who is dealing with these issues so that they're not falling through the cracks and we can avoid things like that would happen at Shields.
Thank you. Candidate Case. What would you propose the City Council do to prevent another incident like the recent incident at the Shields store and gun violence in general?
Sorry, Micah, I'm just following you, so I have to respond to this one comment, though. Every other developed nation on earth probably has the same number of mental health issues that we do. They do not have our gun problems. We don't have a mental health problem in this country. We have a gun problem, period. Legislatively, the city of Eden Prairie, hands are really tied on much to do about how we could have possibly prevented what happened at Shields. It needs to be legislative at the state and federal level. I do think that mayors have, one of the strongest powers that a mayor has is to convene. And so I am part, the mayor is part of the Regional Council of Mayors. It's about 55 cities. We meet monthly on a Monday around noon. And that group could come together with a resolution that could be taken to the legislature then, and that begins to be pretty powerful. So there are things that we could do to lobby, and there are things that we could do to pressure. But legislatively, at the moment, the city of Eden Prairie could not have prevented a suicide at the counter at Shields. And even if we could somehow do gun locks or pull the pins out, people, obviously, as their gun gets carried out into their trunk by the Shields employee and then shake hands and then they walk away, they could load their gun up and go back in the store. So we are not going to be able to prevent that across America unless we get really serious about gun regulation.
Thank you. Candidate Show Walter. What would you propose the City Council do to prevent another incident like the recent incident at the Shields store and gun violence in general?
I think, excuse me, the City Council's job in this is really to consult with people who deal with this every day. Consult with law enforcement, the chief of police, the teams that, you know, they have in the police department that train on this, that they educate themselves on this on a regular basis. None of us here are gun experts, that I know of, maybe you are, but I'm not. And I can't propose to say how anything could have been prevented, unfortunately, the terrible incident at Shields. Excuse me. And knowing that, I mean, I worked, you know, for the Eden Prairie Police Department and another police department for a couple of years. Unfortunately, this is just a really public incident that has happened. Things like this happen all the time. And it's, I truly believe it's a mental health issue first. Guns don't go off by themselves. Somebody has to make a decision. And I would really like the council to explore that more.
Thank you. For the next question, we'll start with candidate Show Walter. Do you support the proposed 2023 Eden Prairie budget? What might you change?
I'm going to be completely honest because that's how I am, honest, transparent. What you see is what you get. I don't really know what's in that budget. I don't know where a lot of those funds are coming and going from. I would have to sit down, read it thoroughly before I could support it or not support it. I wouldn't take anybody's word for it. I do think, too, I would, I would like, it's hard to know how to support something when you can't see the receipts. So that would be my first goal, would be to investigate thoroughly what all of the things are in the budget, not just the topics, but the actual details.
Thank you. Candidate Freiberg. Do you support the proposed 2023 Eden Prairie budget? What might you change?
Absolutely, I support the budget. I like the budget the way it is. The one thing I like about it is that it fully funds the needed elements to keep our city running, to keep our city safe. If you look at the budget, take the time to look at it, and you'll see that there's very, very little open to interpretation on it. It's pretty straightforward, the numbers on it. The police department is fully funded, the fire department is fully funded to what they need, their requests, our park and rec department, as far as for our trails. I'm happy the way it is, and I do support it.
Thank you. Candidate Lehman. Do you support the proposed 2023 Eden Prairie budget? What might you change?
I have not had the opportunity to read it. I wasn't aware that it was available for public consumption, and now that I know, I'd love to take a look at it and study it in detail.
Thank you. Candidate Nelson. Do you support the proposed 2023 Eden Prairie budget? What might you change?
Yes, I support the proposed Eden Prairie budget. I believe it's very important to fund roads, sewer, and water. If you let any of those things go, as much as four years, you have to start replacing them, and that costs a fortune. That's the best way to raise your taxes is not to take care of what you have. I believe in paying our employees a decent salary and health insurance. That's the way you keep the wonderful employees you have and aren't constantly retraining somebody else. But because we do treat our employees fairly, they stay for a very long time and are often given awards as some of the best in the whole Twin Cities. And it's fair for all people, and it keeps parks, it keeps the things you can see and can't see, but it does it in a very businesslike way that allows us to do all this and keep our taxes very low. But we cut energy and all sorts of things that does keep it low and allows us to do and keep our city the way we want it to be in a fair and productive manner.
Thank you. Candidate Olson. Do you support the proposed 2023 Eden Prairie budget? What might you change?
I think it's a great budget, and, you know, I'd echo a lot of the things that have been said already. And it's, you know, the, you know, we need to prioritize the public safety budget. That's something that I would want to be advocating for. But one thing that I completely agree with the Councilwoman Nelson was just saying is that, and I hope a lot of people know this, but the city of Eden Prairie was named, I think, one of the top workplaces in the state, maybe in the country, and it should be commended. And there's a lot of excellence that's going on with the city budget. You know, the only thing that I would just add to this, that I think we always need to have a perspective in, is valuing the taxpayer. And I think that this budget does. And I think, but every time we look at adding services or increasing budgets, we definitely need to keep the taxpayer in mind, and I think that's a really important piece when considering the topic of budgeting.
Candidate Case. Do you support the proposed 2023 Eden Prairie budget? What might you change?
Yes, I do, and I'll not change anything. You know, government, people forget, is one of the most transparent entities, organizations in our world today, certainly much, much more so than corporations, even maybe more than nonprofits, because there are so many regulatory laws that govern the transparency that's mandatory. So I don't blame people that don't get the chance to see it because we all, like, I don't go out and read the county budget, right, until I have to. But it's been available, really, the budget itself each year has been available for decades. And so the 2023 budget's certainly available to anybody online to go out and see. It's $50 million, $40 million of it will be raised through taxes. A budget is the single most important document a council could ever vote on because it's the very personality of that city at that time. If you want to know what the city of Eden Prairie valued back in 1978, go read its budget. So the budget is the reflection of the people as the representatives vote on that. We spend about 40% of our budget on public safety, about 30% on public works, about 25% on parks and rec, and about 5% on public policy. So truth and transparency is all over our budget, and it reflects all of the work and the values of our council as we represent our community.
Thank you. Next question, we're going to start with candidate Case. The city has very little land that is buildable for housing and a dearth of affordable housing. How would you address this?
Well, it's really difficult. I know a couple of people here tonight talked about, oh, we just need to get more affordable housing, we need to lower taxes, or we just need to build more single-family affordable housing. I was with four or five mayors from around here the other day, Minnetonka, Edina, Hopkins, Bloomington, and me. And we were sitting, and we all agreed, just let me say this before you jump at this, that we will never again in history, in any of our cities, build an affordable, single-family home without tremendous public subsidy. And the reason is the land values are so high. So the idea that we can just magically make 650, that's our average new home sale right now, $650,000 houses just become affordable, that's not going to happen. So the only affordable component we have for living arrangements in our city today are apartment buildings. And we have an inclusionary housing ordinance which mandates that if an apartment complex has 200 homes or apartments in it, then 20% to 25%, depending we negotiate, if those places are affordable, because it's built into the cost of the building. In essence, it's subsidized by future tax dollars. So that's about the only way we can do it. We need to keep doing that. This seven-county metro area is 20,000 housing units short right now and will be 70,000 housing units short by 2030. So why are all the apartments, buildings going up right now? Because we're short of housing. You see them in Minnetonka, Edina, Hopkins, Eden Prairie, Bloomington. They're going everywhere because we're short on housing. We need to do something about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Show Walter. The city has very little land that is buildable for housing and a dearth of affordable housing. How would you address this?
Well, I don't think we have to go look at unused land. I think there's other ways to find places to build apartment buildings. I know we want to call it affordable housing, but it's apartments, you know. I don't, I would really like to know how affordable they are for people. I don't know, I have a friend who's a single mom, and she's on a two-year waiting list. So I know that we're short on affordable housing. She makes under $40,000 a year, and she's stuck in her predicament. I've, she's, you know, worked with the county, and like I said, she's on a two-year waiting list. So I know we need to find solutions. I don't think we need to always go to unused land just to throw up apartment buildings and make it work. I think that there are other pieces of property that could be looked at that maybe aren't fully tenanted, that maybe the commercial owner would want to sell or do something different with it. I'd like to really know, too, more about the federal funding that the city gets through the affordable housing money that they receive on a regular basis.
Thank you. Candidate Freiberg. The city has very little land that is buildable for housing and a dearth of affordable housing. How would you address this?
We in the council have to deal with it, you know, all the time on it. Candidate Case brought up a good point, which I'm privy to also, is that 20,000 shortage on housing units at the present time with an increase upwards of 70,000, you know, in the near future. Gives us only a couple of Gives us only a couple other options, and I'll throw a third one maybe in it. Apartments multifamily is the way to go. Unfortunately, there is very, very limited land to build on. That means going up also. But then again, we have an airport, too, so we have limitations, what we can go, how far up. The one aspect that we need to address maybe further down the road is redevelopment. A redevelopment may be something that is zoned totally different, different part of the city itself, vacant, maybe it's been vacant for quite a while, but if it's rezoned, it might have some possibilities to maybe have an apartment, maybe have other type of housing, you know, that we could, you know, categorize in it a little further away from our dense core.
Thank you. Candidate Lehman, the city has very little land that is buildable for housing and a dearth of affordable housing. How would you address this?
I'd like to take a look at, there isn't really a great solution that will meet everyone's needs. You know, land is limited here, and that's why it goes up in value, but I think maybe we could do a better job of taking a look at property that's currently being underutilized and see what we could do to use those pieces of property towards trying to alleviate our housing shortage.
Thank you. Candidate Nelson, the city has very little land that is buildable for housing and a dearth of affordable housing. How would you address this?
Well, the council has addressed it in this last year with our housing policies. Every new apartment complex that comes in to the city now has to have affordable units, and that goes up to 30% of the average mean income in Hennepin County to 60%. And they do get money possibilities from the city for doing this. First, they said that nobody else would ever build here, and we've had three complexes since that came in, who have come in all agreeing to have affordable units in perpetuity, where they never go out. It's not only apartments, the rule also goes for owned, non-single-family homes, so twinhouses, condominiums have to have an affordable component, and they figured out how to do that, where it stays affordable when the owners sell, and does allow them to sell. Also, we work on existing affordable housing when it comes on the market. We do work with some organizations that sometimes can purchase it, or people can, new buyers of it can help get the home fixed up so that they can live there. It's not going to end the problem, but these are positive steps that we will put many, many more units available.
Thank you. Candidate Olson, the city has very little land that is buildable for housing and a dearth of affordable housing. How would you address this?
Well, there are some great city-level programs that are being done here. You know, when it comes to affordable housing, there are just so many different factors to take into consideration, just like all issues, right? There's so many different perspectives. And the way that I see it right now, right, is that, that the overall context of this is important, and one of the realities that we need to face is that the rates of affordable housing, while lower than market value, right, and they are, are sometimes not that much lower than market value in the first place. And housing costs here in Minnesota are much higher than a lot of parts of the country. And that's really hurting low and middle-income residents. And when you look at the data, I would contend that you'll find that government action and policy are big contributors to those high costs of housing. Now, I want to be very clear about something, right? I am not saying that Eden Prairie government is a contributor of this, because when you look at a lot of the factors and the mandates and regulations and fees, they're coming outside of the jurisdiction of Eden Prairie, right? They're including the Met Council, for example. And so the bottom line, you know, for me, is looking to advocate to eliminate the barriers at the state, regional, and county level, and advocating for that.
Thank you. The next question, we're going to start with candidate Olson. What would you do to ensure that timely notice is given to a greater number of the community when properties like the recent Valley View Apartments and the Miller Springs are proposed to be developed?
Yeah, I mean, I think when you look at these issues, I mean, I think it's looking, again, for innovative ways to engage residents, right? Because, you know, they're, you know, the mayor was very clear about how government is very transparent, and there are a lot of great things and transparency piece. I think we need to look, you know, whether it comes to economic development issues, housing issues, and projects that are going on in the city, how can we engage residents in a more innovative way? You know, I don't know if this goes across the board, but I would venture to guess that a lot of folks look at city council meetings, maybe it's a little intimidating to attend. I'm just guessing here, but there's probably a fair amount of people that might say that. So are there ways that we could go into the community and hold some town halls, look for some innovative ways to engage people when these projects come up? And that's what I would look at.
Thank you. Candidate Case, what would you do to ensure that timely notice is given to a greater number of the community when properties like the recent Valley View Apartments and the Miller Spring are proposed to be developed?
You know, it does get back to the idea that we are transparent, we do communicate, and when people are not paying attention, which I understand, like I said, with the county, I don't always pay attention to everything they do, then government needs to communicate again, and then again, and again. I mean, at the end of the day, it's government's responsibility even to almost force feed so that people really do get the message. So one thing we could do, we usually, we have an ordinance that says we notice for 500 feet around a development. If we anticipate, or if staff anticipates, because council doesn't get in on this until sometimes late in the process, if they anticipate that this might be a hotter issue, then we notice on 1,000 feet. I like Micah's idea of maybe somehow bringing meetings out to that neighborhood. This doesn't happen very often. This is quite rare, actually. In my 26 years, we might be looking at a dozen instances where things kind of blew up at a council meeting that we maybe weren't anticipating quite enough. But right now, we have a developer meeting, sometimes a second developer meeting, a planning commission, all these are noticed, and then a council meeting, and all these opportunities to get involved, to learn, to find out are there, but they're not always recognized or noticed by the community. And again, government then needs to figure out ways to even more get people involved just to make sure that they don't seemingly seem surprised then at the council meeting, which for us, again, is the end of a, you know, four, five, six-month process, but for many people, it's just the beginning.
Thank you. Candidate Showalter, what would you do to ensure that timely notice is given to a greater number of the community when properties like the recent Valley View Apartments and Miller Spring are proposed to be developed?
I would like to, I understand what candidate Case is saying about noticing the public. When I worked at the city, that was, there are very specific, pardon me, processes for doing that. I would like to explore new ways. I mean, this is 2022. The government should be able to step into new ways of maybe broadcast texting. You know, do you want to know what's going on in your neighborhood? You can sign up for broadcast text. There's, I would love to explore so many of those possibilities. You know, if I were mayor, I would love to bring new technology to allowing people more information, whether that's putting things up right on the front of the webpage, make it easy for people to find, a search engine, a database, you know. I think there's, I think there's a lot of discussion around that, that we should engage the public on, too. How do they want to be notified?
Thank you. Candidate Freiberg, what would you do to ensure that timely notice is given to a greater number of the community when properties like the recent Valley View Apartments and the Miller Spring are proposed to be developed?
Thank you. One thing I, I've never really agreed with that 500-foot, just that number, 500 feet. I think it definitely has to be flexible at times, like candidate Case mentioned. I would also like to see it. I see no problem in going 750 or 1,000, because I'm hearing it quite often, that why is it just one and a half football fields? That's all 500 feet is, basically, when it can be in packed an area a whole lot bigger than that. So I would be very open to discussions about expanding that. I have no problem as far as coming out sooner, you know, because the more people can be engaged, and I like the idea as far as using different media sources, we could probably do a better job at that. It kind of avoids surprises, because that's never a good outcome.
Thank you. Candidate Lehman, what would you do to ensure that timely notice is given to a greater number of the community when properties like the recent Valley View Apartments and the Miller Spring are proposed to be developed?
Well, I think all of us are aware of the information saturation that we all face, especially younger generations of people, and we're, I mean, how many emails do I just skip over? I'm just tired of my inbox being full of things, you know, we're competing in this information age for relevance, so I'd like to see the, this city investigate new ways of engaging residents, and there are, more than you could shake a stick at, there are many, many different methods. I'd like to have a, I'd like to study which ones are most effective. We ran into that at the school board. How do we communicate our message to the constituency in a way that we will get feedback from them in terms of what they want? And I, this, the current regulations, I think, strike me as being dated. I'd like to maybe take a study at the current regulation for notification to see if that could be maybe expanded a little bit. I mean, it strikes me as being mainly dated. It affects all of us as a community, not just those within a certain radius of a given property.
Thank you. Candidate Nelson, what would you do to ensure that timely notice is given to a greater number of the community when properties like the recent Valley View Apartments and the Miller Spring are proposed to be developed?
I think we do have to expand the area that is mailed. I think legally, we have to mail to a certain part. But then we have a city Facebook pages, and it wouldn't be that difficult to put aside a piece of it that would show you a map of where a project was proposed, planning in the council meetings and times, and maybe something you could click on to go get some more information from some other page in the city. Often, nobody is particularly interested at all in any given project. Other projects, that's a different story. But if you really wanted to know about everything, it would be not that difficult to check in with Facebook, but we still have to do mailing to a certain amount, as we are responsible for doing that.
Thank you. The next question, we're going to start with candidate Nelson. Give an example of structural inequity with affordable housing within Eden Prairie and how you propose to solve it.
Well, we have had a few problems come up where certain apartment buildings were not being cared for as well as they were supposed to be doing. And we do have city inspectors. They inspect every unit in Eden Prairie at least once every four years. But when we find out that there are problems with, for tenants, we send an inspector out right away. And anything that needs to be fixed has to be fixed. Ultimately, though we've never had to do it yet, we can pull their license. We will not tolerate full slums in Eden Prairie by any stretch of the imagination. Sometimes people living there are scared, though, and there is a housing group in town that does make themselves available to some of those folks, and even if they need to translate into languages, and in one case, they brought it to the council. The new programs with new affordable housings are good. The city has funds that can be used to rehab existing complexes, but it's important that things be kept up at least to a safe level.
Thank you. Candidate Olson, give an example of structural inequity with affordable housing within Eden Prairie and how you propose to solve it.
Well, first, quite frankly, I think Councilwoman Nelson did an incredible job of listing those examples, and I would echo everything that she just said, particularly on those issues. And I just want to kind of reroute a little bit, because I want to talk a little bit about the Race and Equity Report. There's just two fantastic recommendations. If people haven't read that report that I think was rolled out last week, you should take a time to read the full, the full thing. But I wanted to emphasize two things on that that I think are really important. The first is the, in the emergency response section, talking about de-escalation training for the police department and additional, kind of this section talked about building community trust, and not only is that important, but we should recognize that the police department is doing those things already, and so we should look to encourage that. The other part that I think is important is developing the future leaders section in that report, and, you know, this has more broad implications in developing the next leadership of civic engagement, and I think that's really important for our community.
Thank you. Candidate Case, give an example of structural inequity with affordable housing within Eden Prairie and how you propose to solve it.
I think this is the hardest question tonight because of the definition part of it and trying to understand it. So you two did a great job at that, I'm glad that you went first. I'm going to make the assumption that we're talking about the systemic racism, structural inequity that may be present within our affordable housing system, community. And if that's what the question's about, I do think, as Councilmember Nelson said, that we have codes and state and municipal codes to help with any issues that might arise within the affordable housing that result from maybe language barriers to culture barriers. I think if we achieve, though, our housing goals, that we will subsequently then address the structural inequity, systemic racism pieces to that, that are present within the system. So the two can go hand in hand. I don't think they necessarily overlap, and, well, they overlap, I don't think they're one in the same. But as we address affordable housing, and as we then have another swim lane going on simultaneously with our systemic racism, structural inequity work, I think we can pay attention as the two overlap and see what we can do to make sure that we can address both as we go through the next year or two.
Thank you. Candidate Showalter, give an example of structural inequity with affordable housing within Eden Prairie and how you propose to solve it.
I have to agree with candidate Case. This was a tough one, because the definition of what structural inequity could go in a couple of different directions. So, and I ditto pretty much what they've already said. I would like to add, though, that building relationships with the people who need the affordable housing, I think, is key. Understanding what their needs are, what they're looking for in housing, and just understanding their culture and what they, you know, need. Like I was talking about my friend who's a single mom, I know her needs because she's my friend. I would love to know the needs of all the people, but that's probably not possible. How do you get out in the community and figure out what these people need? Are these people already in Eden Prairie? I mean, I have so many questions to ask this person who asked the question, to dig deeper into it. You know, are these people from outside of Eden Prairie that are coming in? The structural inequity, the way I think they might have intended it, and if I'm wrong, I'm sorry, is, you know, how do we make sure that everybody has an equitable opportunity to get affordable housing? I would like to explore that more.
Thank you. Candidate Freiberg, give an example of structural inequity with affordable housing within Eden Prairie and how you propose to solve it.
One of the problems that I've worked with, with various groups, is the fear to speak up. They're afraid of a landlord, they're afraid to speak up. They're afraid of the landlord, they're afraid to speak up. Therefore, many things, you know, keep on going as far as, you know, as far as the units itself. We do have a couple of tools that's been brought up as far as, we have no tolerance for intolerance, especially when it comes to housing. Inspections, we, we take an active approach to inspections. We can pull their license itself. We try to mediate as, you know, there's two sides of everything. Communication's very important, and language can be a very distinct barrier, and when it comes down to affordable housing in Eden Prairie many times. I think what we got to do is that we just have to know that it's not going to be tolerated, because many, many of these companies that have been bought, existing apartment buildings in Eden Prairie, they come from outstate, and all of a sudden, they have their own opinion of how, you know, things should run, when they haven't even got past the communication barriers yet that they're facing. So we have to stay on top of it.
Thank you. Candidate Lehman, give an example of structure, structural inequity with affordable housing within Eden Prairie and how you propose to solve it?
I guess I'm curious what is meant by the term structural inequity. I wish there was some sort of way of getting more specifics on what is meant by that term. But just in general, I think it's important that we enforce the municipal codes for housing, and we don't overlook segments of the population where maybe there is some cultural or linguistical differences, and, you know, caution that, you know, against systemic racism. I mean, and just making, being conscious that, and making sure that we're not doing it without realizing that we're doing it. And just really doing all we can to help those who are, like the single mother that candidate Showalter uses as an example, being sure, giving an ear to those who are less fortunate in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidates, thank you, candidates, for answering all those questions. Candidates will now have two minutes for their closing statements to summarize their qualifications and their positions. And we're going to start first with candidate Lehman.
There are a lot of reasons why so many businesses and households live here. Personally, I've enjoyed the opportunity to be an elected school board member and a volunteer whenever there was an opportunity. I'd like to have the opportunity to participate in the civic affairs and work together with the staff here that, and continue, continue working towards making this a, a great place to live in the future. I've, have a bachelor's, a master's degree in business, 30 years in doing technical support where things change rapidly, and where there's an urgent need to problem solve things that you've never seen before on short notice while working with very diverse types of people. And I excel at working with people. I'm a bridge builder. I, I enjoy working with people. I've been on 12 different overseas humanitarian projects, short-term humanitarian projects, and I've had the privilege of working under difficult circumstances to help a lot of different people. Sometimes, in some cases, where even I felt maybe my health or my well-being was in danger, but working with the people around me and helping as many people as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Nelson?
Summarize, I've been on the council for four terms. I have given up many other things in my life that I could have been doing, but I think the community health and safety and the wonderful people in Eden Prairie are worth it. I enjoy meeting residents and helping them. And because I believe in Eden Prairie, I will work to continue making it a great community. Things that I believe in is that we can have a great quality of life when we put our priorities on sensible budgets that lead to low taxes, well-maintained roads, parks, playgrounds, and snow plowing. We support our police and firefighters for a safe community, and we use innovation and wise energy. We have a housing mix that works for all. Four years ago, I promised that if you, I was elected to the city council, residents wouldn't have to worry about well-maintained roads, parks, water, sewer, and a safe community plus snow plowing, as I would worry about those things for them. I kept that promise, and I make the same promise again.
Thank you. Candidate Olson?
Well, I want to thank the League of Women Voters again for holding this forum this evening, and I also want to extend a thank you to everybody on this stage for their commitment to serve and putting themselves out here. It's, it's difficult to do so, and we should commend everybody that decides to, to put themselves out there in that way. You know, I believe in the power of people, and, you know, I, I think that when we look at the impact that we can have in our community, if we all just kind of looked at ways to put ourselves out there, engage just a little bit more, look at, think of the, the impact that we could have in our community. You know, it is time to, to do politics differently, and that's what the vision of my campaign has been from the very beginning. I want to put people first and have leaders focused on service. You know, I'm running on a platform of, of safe neighborhoods, economic opportunity, and building trust. That's, those are the, the values that I believe and I'm putting forward as my platform. You know, all I ask is that you give me a hard look. My website is MichaelOlson.org, and I put not only my email address, but my personal cell phone number on the website. So if anybody has any questions or concerns, go to the website and, and contact me, text, call. And the last thing I'll just point out is, I just want to say is that whether you support me or not, make sure you go vote.
Thank you. Candidate Case?
Thank you. Eden Prairie today, right now, is in a really amazing position. Safe neighborhoods, well-maintained infrastructure, excellent parks and trails, great schools, strong business climate, enviable tax base with some of the lowest taxes in the seven county metro area. There's always room to improve, always new ways to address the needs and wants of our residents. But with our strongest city council in years, having the best relationships with the most competent and well-respected city staff that I've ever worked with or known, and the highest quality of life scores of any similar city in the state of Minnesota, why would we change course? For what reason? And, and what's the expected outcome? I'm asking for your continued support on November 8th. It's been the greatest privilege of my professional life to serve this community as your mayor and to make a difference in the lives of the people of Eden Prairie. Thank you again to the League of Women Voters. I agree with the other candidates. Thank you to all of you for being here tonight, and mostly, thank you to our residents who make our community what it is and the strong community that it is. Have a great evening. Take care.
Thank you. Candidate Showalter?
I'm going to end this with, why did I choose to run for mayor? It's not because I really wanted to, I'll be completely honest. It's not that I wouldn't want to be, it's that it wasn't something I had ever considered. But I thought about running for a, for being a council seat, and then when I looked at the candidates, I saw nobody in 64-plus thousand people stood up to oppose our mayor. I would never say that, Mayor Case, you've done an amazing job. I just think a city of 64,000 people should have somebody else that might be willing to do the job. I have 30 years of experience in customer service. I have served people for a very long time. I enjoy it. I love it. I thrive off of it. People make me happy. I don't always agree with everybody, and they don't always agree with me, and that's okay. I believe in respecting people's differences, but celebrating the similarities. And there's a similarity in all of us, all the time. It might be one small thread, but to pull on that thread and to figure out how we can compromise, how we can come to agreement on things, or just empathize and see another person's point of view, I think that's really important for somebody who is in this position. I just want to thank you, League of Women Voters, and everybody that's here. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you. Candidate Freiberg?
I believe most of us could agree that prior to building a house, you need to set and place a strong foundation. The same can be said for those who seek public office. It takes passion to effectively serve and represent every man, woman, and child, regardless of them agreeing with your positions. You need to be in it for the long haul and not be afraid to make the tough decisions. You need your council members to be vested and involved in your community, be accessible and listen to what you say. Low taxes and a high level of city services are a difficult balance to maintain. It takes passionate and experienced leadership to attain it. It doesn't happen by accident. It takes courage to do the right thing when it appears the popular media rhetoric is to defund the police department and cut back funding on first responders. Your leadership on this Eden Prairie City Council chooses to fully fund our police and fire departments and are proud to do so. In fact, a recent citywide survey of our residents agree with us, but giving a combined 98% good, excellent rating to our fire department and a 92% good, excellent rating to our police department, both well above the national averages. Ask yourself, is this all by accident? I don't think so. I believe it is a sign of experienced leadership, deep civic involvement, and a non-ending passion for the city we all care for. I'm asking each of you, when it comes to the decision, who do you want to represent you going forward to vote to reelect Mark Freiberg to the Eden Prairie City Council?
Thank you, candidates, and thank you for loving your communities enough to, or your community enough to want to run for office. Again, we would like to remind you that the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. And now, here again, is Tom Schaffnagle.
This is going to be very brief, because I'm sure we all would like to get home. The League of Women Voters Eden Prairie would like to thank you for all coming tonight, and also all those people viewing on the internet and cable. I would especially, again, like to thank our candidates for being part of the democratic process by running for office and for being willing to serve our community. Besides being a nonpartisan political educator, the League of, the League also researches issues important to our members and to the health of our communities. If you are interested in finding out more about what we do to make a difference and what you can do, please pick up a membership brochure at the registration table or visit us at LWVMEPH.org. Membership is open to all genders age 16 and older. You can also find more information about candidates and about voting at votefor11.org. Again, thank you for coming, and remember to vote on November 8th. Thank you.[1747.86][1747.86]